I'd call this special meeting of the Public Facilities Authority to order for Tuesday, July 29th, 2025. Will the Secretary please make the announcements and call the roll?
Good afternoon, everyone. We could just remember to silence our cell phones. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Chair Rusty Paul.
Here.
Member Andy Baumann.
I'm present, but traveling out of the jurisdiction, so attending remotely.
Member Tippi DiGiulio.
Here.
Member Melody Kelly. Absent. Member Melissa Mueller.
Here.
Member John Paulson.
Here.
Member Jody Rochelle.
Yeah.
We have a form.
Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DiGiulio.
I move approval of the meeting agenda for the special call meeting for Tuesday, July 29th, 2025.
We have a motion by Mr. DiGiulio. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiGiulio, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we approve the meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on approving the meeting agenda. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
No?
I vote aye.
Okay, the meeting agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for July 15th.
Motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Motion by Miss Rochelle, seconded by Miss Mueller, that we approve the meeting minutes. Is there any discussions? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on the approval of the meeting minutes. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 The meeting minutes are approved. Moving to new business. The Secretary will please read the first item.
This is PFA number 2025-112, consideration of resolution to approve between Trammell Crow Company and Sandy Springs Public Facilities Authority for the Hillcrest Mixed-Use Project at 6150 Sandy Springs Circle, presented by Director of Economic Development, Chris Burnett.
Thank you, Burnett.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the PFA. Stand over here so I can get a little better reference to what we're going to talk about today. Rocky, would you go to that memorandum addressed to the PFA? All right, so as the agenda item, agenda, first agenda item denotes, we are currently presenting to you today for your ratification, execution of parking agreements between the PFA and the 6150 Sandy Springs Owner LLC. That's a subsidiary company of the partnership of Trammell Crow Company and Third and Urban, which are co-developers on this project. And this is their entity. As you know, they're acquiring 80.1 acres of land from the Sandy Springs Methodist Church. They have a, it's called Hillcrest. You've seen the designs for that. It's a mixed-use development with traditional multifamily, both your typical stacked flats, multifamily, plus townhomes, retail and restaurant space, and a parking garage, which will have 646 total square, sorry, total spaces in it, of which 111 will be acquired by the city through an easement agreement that we will execute with the entity, so that we will own those spaces for a duration of 50 years or less, in the event that they buy us out of those in the future. The second amendment that we will, well, so I mentioned 111 parking spaces out of a total of 646. So the city will own 17.2% of the total parking spaces in the garage. We will finance that through a tax abatement, which was approved this morning by the Development Authority, so that over the course of 10 years, $4,877,333, which is what we believe to be the extent of our maximum investment, that's what's capped in our agreement, would be repaid to us through the tax abatement on the property that will be granted to Trammell Crow through its entity. So again, the cap on our expense, our investment is $4,877,333. Next, Rocky. So let's talk about how that money is being spent. First of all, at closing, which we anticipate to be probably Thursday of this week, the city will initially fund $383,484, of which 165,615 will be funded directly back to the Development Authority, and that will pay the fee for the abatement that was approved this morning. Also, we will find additional cost of 115,000, I'm sorry. Three of the 383, 165 is the fee, and right at $220,000 is for the transaction costs for the closing of this. And that covers all of the different attorneys that have been involved, including seller's counsel, Austin and Byrd, and our counsel, which is Jim Woodward and Dan Lee. So those, that will be the only amount funded at closing for this transaction. Then, over the next 30 days, we will move $3,593,849 into an escrow account that will establish with Truist Bank. It'll be our escrow account, so those funds will be held and administered by the city. And the way that that money will be invested is $3,312 is going to pay for the construction of the 111 parking spaces. That's just slightly under $30,000 per space. Also, when you, we'll have $115,000, $116,000 in a developer fee, and that represents 3.5% of the hard cost of construction. So take this times 3.5%, and you get 115,931. Also, we'll have a contingency reserve. So in the event that we hit subsurface geotech issues, bad soils, or other issues that would require changes to the budget, we have allocated an additional 5%, which is 165,615, is additional cost in the event that we have contingencies above the hard cost number that's been given to us. And as you all know, that's typical in construction contracts to have a contingency reserve. So when you put that together, that's where you get to the 35,938,49. That funding, that money will be in an escrow account with Truist. It will be controlled strictly by the city. As construction draws or requested, we will have a representative that will be evaluating the progress of the construction and the invoices that have been submitted to make sure that the contractor is not trying to get ahead of us, to make sure we're on a pay-as-you-go basis, calculated on a percentage of completion for the construction of the project. There's a mechanism in our agreement, if there is a dispute, for example, if the invoice is overstated, if, if less work has been done than we're being billed for, we'll have a dispute mechanism. We may still pay a portion of the invoice for that percentage that we feel is accurate, but we have the ability to dispute overages. What typically happens in that case, if the GC tries to get ahead of us on the billings, we'll dispute that. It doesn't mean we won't pay it down the road, but it means we may wait and pay it a month or two or three later once the work that they've billed for has actually been completed. You also try not to advance on stored materials, because they can, sometimes they can be taken off-site, and if you've already advanced for those, then, then you've got a loss there if you've advanced on storing materials that are taken off the site. And so that's the mechanism we'll use. Once those draws have been approved, then we will execute a transfer of funds to Trammell Crow to pay for the garage as the construction progresses. All right, Rocky, if you want to move on up. So you'll also recall in this that we are aggregating an additional $900,000, which we, which will be used for road improvements, safety, and streetscape in and around the City Springs area, principally on Sandy Springs Circle and on Mount Vernon. Examples of some streetscapes could be, we do additional landscaping, or we do a landscape strip, perhaps coming up Sandy Springs Circle. So those things, landscape strips tend to slow traffic speed. We may consider taking out the southbound lane of Sandy Springs Circle and turning that into parallel parking. You'll recall, we did that in 2018, when we did the north, when we did that project, we did the northbound lanes. We took what was two lanes and made parallel parking on one lane, and so now it's only one lane coming north, but we still had two lanes going southbound. And the traffic speeds coming down the hill from Mount Vernon to Hammond could be pretty fast. So from a public safety perspective, you know, we'll, we'll do a traffic study with Kenley Horn and evaluate what needs to be done to create better safety and better pedestrian mobility in this area. Because over time, we'll have hundreds more residents living across the street that will want to come here to City Springs to events, to eat here, want to go to Heritage to concerts, will want to go to the new restaurant or coffee shop that opens at William Spain. And so there'll be more, more people here. We want to make sure we keep them safe, and we also continue to improve the beauty of the City Springs District. So we'll have that 900,000 in additional funds set aside for, for those projects. That will, this will be paid for through a tax abatement. Again, Development Authority has executed their piece of the documents this morning. Under the standard, it's already been through all the Fulton County approvals. And so that will work like your typical Fulton County abatement in that, once the property is finished and the new assessed value has been calculated, and the new tax for the property has been calculated, then, beginning in the first year, it'll be a 50% reduction, and that will decline by 5% a year, each year, until the end of the 10th year, when the property and the taxes will be restored to their full value. But over the course of that, we believe that the savings or the taxes will be around $5 million, which is, again, over the course of the project. Trammell Crow has committed up to $4,877,000, that all of that tax savings or all those taxes will come to the city. And we'll use the cash flow that they pay the city from the abatement to pay for this project. So in essence, we're front-ending the money over the next year, and then we're receiving payments back over the, the duration of the 10-year tax abatement. In addition to the cash flow from the, the abatement payments, we will also receive cash flow from parking there. The city will own its 11, 111 spaces. They'll probably be managed under a joint parking agreement with Trammell Crow, although those, those details still have to be worked through. But whatever revenue is collected on our city spaces comes to the city. We will, in turn, share in the cost of the, of the lot, the lot only, not the rest of the project. We'll, we'll incur on annual basis 17.2% of the operating cost for the parking garage. And that's based on the fact that we own 17.2% of the total number of spaces. So we'll get, we'll get all of the revenue from our spaces, and we'll pay 17.2% of the operating cost for the lot overall. So what we're asking you to do today is for the PFA to do two things, the first of which is to approve ratification and execution of our easement agreements that will memorialize the city's acquisition of the 111 lots. And I know Jim Woodward's on the call, our bond attorney, of course, Dan's been representing us. So Dan or Jim, if you all want to go into any detailed discussion on the documents themselves, since that's the first request that we have for the PFA today, if you'd like to do that.
I think you covered it. Maybe Jim and I could answer any questions that council members may have.
All right. You've heard the report of the Director of Economic Development. What's the desire of the PFA?
Chairman Paul.
Ms. Mueller.
I move that we approve agenda item PFA 2025-12, consideration of resolution to approve parking agreements between Trammell Crow Company and Sandy Springs Public Facilities Authority for the Hillcrest Mixed-Use Project at 6150 Sandy Springs Circle.
You got a motion by Ms. Mueller. Is there a second? Motion by Ms. Mueller, seconded by Ms. Rochelle, that we approve agenda item PFA 2025-12, resolution approving parking agreements between Trammell Crow and Sandy Springs Public Facilities Authority for the Hillcrest Mixed-Use Project. Any discussion? Awesome. And then, Mr. DiGiulio.
Thank you, Chris. At one point, you talked about the representative, the city's representative. We'll keep track to make sure we're not paying ahead of schedule. Who is that? Is it representative of our staff, or is the representative you're referring to a consultant that we're bringing in, a contractor we're bringing in?
So John Eaton, Kristen, and I have not finalized that, but we've talked about bringing in a, an independent construction evaluation firm. Now, if we have the expertise on staff, and we can utilize that, we will. But more than likely, we'll bring in a, a firm that specializes in independent construction management to be our boots-on-the-ground, biggest project.
One, one other safeguard in this, I would add, is that there is a lender. Trammell Crow has a lender in this, and the lender, as many of you know, who don't build anything, will be doing the same sort of inspection and from, uh, progress payments as well. So there, there's, there's a, there's a watchdog in addition to what the city made.
Thank you.
Mr. DiGiulio.
Chris, you mentioned that the city would be responsible for 17.2 or 0.2% of the expenses of the garage.
Operating expenses.
Well, of operating expenses. Has that been defined of what the operating expenses are? Because I assume it's going to include things like maintenance and repairs of the facility, but is operating expenses also going to include their, because they're going to be charging for parking there too? And they're going to have a, a parking company running for them, if I, if I remember correctly?
So, so Tippi, it's, for example, one of the companies on the list that Trammell Crow will interview is Twelve Oaks, the company that's doing our parking here. Maybe Twelve Oaks may not be selected. It depends on who, who ultimately, both parties, we and Trammell, select as who they believe the best parking management company be. But yes, parking management fees would be part of the operating budget, maintenance, restriping, insurance, utilities, lighting, any of those issues that we would say pay to run our own garage, they'll pay as well, and we will share in 17.2% of those parking fee facility management cost. And that would be for the duration of the agreement.
But now, on our revenues coming in, they're, whoever they choose for their management would not be involved? And whoever they choose for their management, whatever revenues they bring in, we would not be involved? Is it still going to be bundled together?
So, so correct. They will receive revenues on, if they charge revenues, that, that can be the decision that they will make. They will certainly have dedicated parking for their residents. Now, whether that gets added to the rental expense, in fact, it will probably be added to the rental expense when they quote a rental rate. They'll say, okay, your apartment or your townhome is X dollars a month, and that includes one space or two spaces. But the spaces that are not dedicated to residents would be used by the folks that come to dinner there, or, or they go to the ice cream shop, or whatever retailers that are there. Of course, most notably, that's going to be surface parking. That's obviously, as we see here, that's where people want to park first. And so it's very possible that we'll use the, that they'll use the same system we do, with a barcode system. In fact, if it's Twelve Oaks, we know the system that they'll use, because they're already using it here. But that seems to be the way that it's going today, is to go to the barcode system, where it's all electronic, so that you have very little staff. Yeah, it requires very limited staff to actually run the parking garage. I imagine that a lot of what we use here, which is the license plate readers, for example, they'll use there as well. So their revenues for their spaces will be aggregated to them. The revenues for our 111 spaces will be aggregated to us. Now, it will require Toni and her team to do some accounting, or if it's the parking management company to provide us with accounting, but we will have to true-up, and they're going to do accounting as well. And we will look at our records and their records, and we'll true-up the, the revenues and the overhead to make sure that we're in sync with each other. So you'll have potentially three sets of eyes, the parking management company, City of Sandy Springs, and Trammell Crow's people, all looking at the finances of this operation on a recurring basis. Thank you.
Ms. Rochelle.
Our, our, our fee is going to, is there any sort of an agreement that says, okay, we have to charge the same amount? Or can we charge one price and they charge another? And our space is going to be used if I want to go up there for retail? Is that, our spaces aren't, it's like, is our spaces are just for things that happen here, and how do we keep others from using that?
Yeah. So if we, what we will do with Trammell Crow is we will give them a list of what will be considered to be the major city events. And they understand that during those city events, and we can designate as many of those as we want to, but those major city events are, are 111 spaces reserved for only our patrons. Now, if we have nothing going on at City Hall that night, and, but we have a busy restaurant crowd, and some of those patrons end up parking in city spaces, we get the revenue from those city spaces. But when we're having major events, especially like fireworks or a big show at the theater, we're going to let them know that you can't use any of the 111 spaces. Those, those are all ours for tonight, because we have a big crowd coming in. And so, right now, I would guess, and Kristen, correct me, if, if we had 30 events like that a year, that would probably be a big number, if even that. Maybe more. But as an example, right now, City Springs Theater staff and cast are parking in the church parking lot at no charge. I guess Natalie and her team will have to make a decision. We collectively will have to make a decision on whether or not staff, if they, if her team continues to park there during theater presentations, are we going to charge them for that? You know, they're going to park in the 111 city spaces, and are we going to charge them for that under our, our fee agreement? So that is something that will have to be worked out. Right now, it is free to them. But, you know, obviously, once we start charging, then either we'll give it, give them free parking, or the City Springs Theater Company can pay us a reimbursement. They can give their employees vouchers, you know, so that they can leave the lots without having to pay. So those are all things that we'll have to work through in determining, you know, the, the parking agreement long-term.
Chris, let me ask a question about consistency in systems. And we're moving to, you know, a lot of paid parking here in the City Springs area, and we have different methods, systems, applications for parking. It's going to lead to even more confusion than what we have right now. How do we harmonize the various systems, even though they may choose a different vendor? Is, is it, is it vendor-dependent, these systems, or are they, can we say, this is our converted system, and any, any vendor can use it, I guess would be the question, because you want to make sure that parking is seamless across the whole area?
And perhaps Dave may speak to this, since he works closely with Twelve Oaks. Our preference would be, honestly, if Twelve Oaks is doing a good job, our preference would be to have Twelve Oaks manage city spaces. We're not under an obligation to use Trammell Crow's parking vendor. We can set our own vendor for our spaces. If it's Twelve Oaks for the whole lot, then we're getting exactly what we have here, the same system. We might decide to pick Twelve Oaks for our spaces as well, meaning we would have the same system. Dave, do you want to speak to our systems now?
I concur with what Chris is saying. Most of those systems are, they're, they're not company-oriented. The platforms are, everybody uses the same platform. But the, 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 the coordination with the parking company is where the key is, because that's where the customer service calls are going to go, and that's it. With us being able to reach out to our parking company to go react to the complaints, take care of the paychecks, that's where we're.
And we do, as I'm sure you all do too, we still get the occasional parking complaint. Mattson got one yesterday or today from someone who just doesn't like the parking system. But those are, those have slowed down, haven't they, Dave? We're not getting a lot.
Yeah, as people get used to it, it goes away, but even so.
Next door, there's thread today.
All right, any other questions as it relates to?
At the end of the 15 years, the, the spaces revert back to, to them, or whoever the owner is at that point in time, and we, and we have no further obligation, we have no further asset.
Correct. You can look at it both as a blessing or a curse.
I understand. I understand what I'm saying. We have no liability, and we have no asset.
Correct.
You speak on the, the bar back.
Right.
Chris, okay.
So we do have a, in the event that Trammell Crow wants to buy back these 111 spaces, there's a provision for that in the agreement. For a cost of $6,624,000, they can buy back the 111 spaces. Now, we'll also give them credits to reduce that price. Those credits would be both from the revenues the city has received from those spaces and the tax abatement payments we've received. So let's say hypothetically, in 10 years, they want to buy out the 111 spaces and pay a 6.6 million, and today, we've collected 2 million. Then they would owe us 4.6 million to make up the difference. But, but they would, in essence, what we did, we took the cost of the spaces times two. So we're building them at a little under 30,000 a space. We would be selling them back to them at around 60,000 a space. And we would have, we have a notice period, so they'd have to let us know if they're going to buy us out, because we would want to, you know, if we're using those heavily, we'll want to make provisions on what do we do for parking if we're going to lose those 111 spaces in six months. So we talked about that a little bit with the DA this morning, at least in the near term, I think we'll, Dave, I don't know when you're going to do demo on the two buildings on Piltover, but I thought is to gravel those lots, right? And we could have those as overflow parking to replace the overflow parking we're using at the church during reconstruction. That probably won't be 105 spaces, I'm guessing.
No, but so we're going to do the, the two parcels to South Piltover and the two parcels to the North. So that's four actual, four parcels that'll be gravelled.
But that'll be a fair number of overflow spaces that'll be available over the next two years while this project is being built.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on agenda item PFA 2025-12, a resolution approving parking agreements between Trammell Crow and Sandy Springs Public Facilities Authority for the Hillcrest Mixed-Use Project at 6150 Sandy Springs Circle. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 The item is approved. The next item, the request for Public Facilities Authority, consideration of the resolution to amend the fiscal year 26 budget to purchase public parking at 6150 Sandy Springs Circle. Burnett, just to that floor.
All right. So the second agenda item relates to how we're going to pay for this. Where are, where's our funds going to come from to make the investment? You all, you all will recall, you're marking 4.4 million dollars in the PFA's budget, and I, and I don't recall what year that was, you might recall. It's been a few years ago when we were in, in fairly extensive talks with the Georgia Commission on the Holocaust about funding a potential building for them. With the belief that that initiative has now gone away, we still have the 4.4 million set aside for that project. Recommendation of staff is that those funds of 4.4 million be reallocated or changed to now go into the primary funding source for this project. Now, at 4.8, almost 4.9 million dollars, the 4.4 million in reallocation of Holocaust funds is not sufficient for all of that. So at some point in the future, if needed, we'll come back with a request to bridge that final funding gap. And that'll probably come from the general fund, but we, we don't need that today. With the 4.4 million that's already set aside for Georgia Commission on the Holocaust, we can move that money into the escrow account, and that will more than cover the cost for the parking garage agreement. It wouldn't cover all of the 900,000 in streetscape improvements, but again, that's not something we're going to do with the, the, the. So our, our commitment to Trammell Crow is that we'll demonstrate to them that on the date of closing, or within 30 days of the date of closing, we have a little under $4 million set aside in the escrow account, and of that 4 million, well, that 4 million will come out of the 4.4, if you all vote today, to reallocate those funds to this project.
All right, you've heard the report. The Director of Economic Development, what's the desire of the authority?
Chairman Paul.
Ms. Mueller.
I move to approve, excuse me, agenda item PFA 2025-13, consideration of the resolution to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget to purchase public parking at 6150 Sandy Springs Circle.
We have a motion by Ms. Mueller. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mueller, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we approve agenda item PFA 2025-13, resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 budget to purchase public parking at 6150 Sandy Springs Circle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on the agenda item PFA 2025-13, resolution to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget to purchase parking at 6150 Sandy Springs Circle. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 The item is approved.
Mayor Paul, Mayor Paul.
Mr. Baumann.
Hey, I'm sorry. I tried to raise my hand. Not going to change my vote. Can I just ask a clarifying question about when we receive repayment on the annually, starting with 50% of the tax abatement in year one? Where will those monies go? Will those go back into the general fund?
Toni, do you want to take that? I know we talked about this yesterday.
Thank you. Chris and I discussed that the bank account that we are opening specifically for this project, we will confirm with the attorneys that it's okay to put those funds back in that account. we will confirm with the attorneys that it's okay to put those funds back in that account and reserve those for the payment of the operational costs and other expenditures associated with the project.
Well, we're talking about four point eight million dollars over the course of ten years. So I, I'm not talking about money from the operations. I'm talking about the tax abatement repayment.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I'm speaking of, the tax abatement of revenues.
We, we, surely, we don't expect to have that many millions of dollars to apply to operating costs.
Correct.
That doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Well, technically, the pilot payment is paid to the development authority.
Right, and then, and then the money will get repaid to the city? How will that work?
That's what we do, the way we do it now, with the other pilot payments.
Right, so, so the, the money, the abatements will come to the Development Authority to repay the, the costs? Or, or to the, well, to the Development Authority or to the Public Facilities Authority?
The abatement arrangement agreed to today would cause for the pilot payment to be made to the development authority.
Which will then do what with the money?
The same thing we do now, like.
Currently, it goes to the general fund.
That's what I, that's all I was asking, yeah.
It's a good question.
All right, well, thanks, Dan, yeah.
Hey, pardon the interruption. I do think after a year or two, certainly after two years, we'll establish a fairly consistent baseline of operating expenses. And once we know that number, let's just say that our share of operating expenses is two hundred thousand dollars a year, and we're bringing in cash flow of a million dollars a year. Then we can take these, the net of eight hundred thousand and allocate that back into the general fund.
Just keep the minimum reserve, whatever you decide.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're going to find those numbers are, are going to be quite different, given that we're seventeen percent of operating cost of a garage, absent some repairs. And we're not talking about huge sums of money here. And this all is, the repayment from the authority, excuse me, the repayment from the abatement is highly front-loaded, given the fact that their abatement is fifty percent in year one, forty-five percent in year two. So, and, and, and it's a very small amount at the, at the end. So we're going to receive the vast majority of the repayment of our costs, including the nine hundred thousand, by the way, which is a separate one. We're going to, we're going to receive that very front-loaded. But I think you've answered the question. We are going, we are taking money that has been allocated and not spent, which was for the GCH. We are using it for this project. But, but in time, that money is going to actually come back to the city in the form of repayment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. DeJulio.
I move adjourned.
Hold on, we got to vote. Oh, I'm sorry, we did vote on that. We have a motion to adjourn by Mr. DeJulio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
There's none. We are adjourned at two oh three. Yeah, I will move to regular order. I'd like to call this special meeting with Sandy Springs City Council, ordered for Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Would the city clerk please make the announcements and call them?
Excuse me, yes. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Rusty Paul.
Present.
Councilmember John Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember Melody Kelly, absent. Councilmember Melissa Mueller.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Rochelle.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tippy DeJulio.
Here.
Councilmember Andy Bowman.
I'm present, but participating remotely, because I'm traveling outside the jurisdiction.
Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the meeting agenda, agenda for the special meeting called Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
The motion by Mr. DeJulio, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on approval of the meeting agenda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
The item is approved. Moving to the new business court, please read the first item.
Agenda item number twenty twenty-five one fifty, consideration of a resolution to abandon that certain permanent construction and maintenance easement executed February eighteen, twenty eighteen, by and between Sandy Springs United Methodist Church Inc. and the City of Sandy Springs on that certain land parcel at sixty-one fifty Sandy Springs Circle, Sandy Springs, Georgia, presented by Economic Development Director Chris Burnett.
Burnett.
So Mayor and Council, you remember back in twenty eighteen, the Sandy Springs Circle Road Project was commencing. We needed to acquire, we needed to acquire a, basically, a slope easement, a maintenance agreement for the slope along the eastern property line of sixty-one fifty Sandy Springs Circle, currently known as the Henson Center. The city did that, acquired that slope easement from Sandy Springs Methodist Church.
Western side. The western side of Sandy Springs Circle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Correct.
I meant to say eastern side of the property. But yes, you're correct, John. It's on the western side of Sandy Springs Circle, going down the hill. That totals about point five two acres, so just slightly over a half acre. And there is a graph in the package rock. I know we did an image of what, of the slope easement. So as you can see, it's, while a half acre sounds like a lot of land, it's a very narrow half acre. It runs all the way down from the start of the property line at the intersection of Mount Vernon and Sandy Springs, down to the end of the property line, which is roughly, you know, just south of where Sandy Springs Place comes in. Or actually, adjacent to, that's the end of the property line, in Sandy Springs Place. And of course, Williams Payne Heritage is right here. So that slope easement runs down that side of the roadway. And so at this time, as part of the sale of this property, the city has been asked to relinquish its slope easement. This was a perpetual slope easement. And so in order for this project to commence, or at least any, any portion of the project that would appear in the slope easement, that slope easement would need to be released, so that the city would no, no longer have an interest in this property and no longer have a financial obligation to maintain this property. So we've come to the conclusion that the slope easement is no longer needed. The reason for that is the slope is going to be taken down as part of this development process, and this will be brought down to street grade by the developer, really negating any additional need for us to keep the slope easement there. Obviously, once we relinquish the easement, if that's what you all did do today, then the responsibility for maintaining all of that becomes solely on the hands of the owners, Trammell Crowe and their partners. So staff is in favor of this, and we would ask you to vote today to approve the resolution to allow for the release of the slope easement.
You've heard the report. The Director of Economic Development wants the desire of council.
Mayor Paul.
Ms. Mueller.
I move that we approve Agenda Item twenty twenty-five one fifty, a consideration of a resolution to abandon that certain permanent construction and maintenance easement executed February eighteen, twenty eighteen, by and between Sandy Springs United Methodist Church, Inc. and the City of Sandy Springs on that certain parcel, land parcel at sixty-one fifty Sandy Springs Circle, Sandy Springs, Georgia.
I have a motion by Ms. Mueller, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mueller, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we approve Agenda Item twenty twenty-five one fifty, a resolution abandoning, abandoning certain permanent construction and maintenance easements executed February twenty eighth, twenty eighteen for sixty-one fifty Sandy Springs Circle. Any discussion? Mr. DeJulio.
Chris, during one of the conversations we had about this, we had considered, was there going to be any remuneration to the city for this property? And we had, and we had talked about the possibility of getting the church to go ahead and in return for us abandoning this, is for the church to go ahead and build a sidewalk for that gap that's between church and this, and one of the cemetery, cemetery there, I think, and one of the cemeteries. Has that progressed any, or did that come into any agreement?
Yes, sir, it has. Now, the city is not a party to that agreement in terms of, you know, we're not, we're not going through the normal process of leading the project and getting bids. But Trammell Crowe and the church have reached agreement amongst themselves where Trammell Crowe or their general contractor, New South, will build that sidewalk at their expense.
Okay.
So the city will not fund anything into that sidewalk project on the north side of Mount Vernon. It will be a shared expense between the church and Trammell.
Okay, but we're getting, we're getting the sidewalk done, just that we're not paying for it?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's a good way. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on Agenda Item twenty twenty-five one fifty, resolution abandoning certain permanent construction and maintenance easements executed February eighteen, twenty eighteen for land parcels at sixty-one fifty Sandy Springs Circles. Any motion, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
The item is approved. Mr. DeJulio.
Mr. Chairman, move adjourned. I mean, Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I move adjourned.
Yeah, motion by Mr. DeJulio, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned.